Good morning. On behalf of the entire membership of the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce, I want to welcome you to this City Council Candidate Forum for City Council District 9. We are pleased to have with us this morning the two candidates in the runoff election, Mr. Marco Barros and Mr. John Courage. My name is Juan Antonio Flores. I am the chairman of the San Antonio Chamber's Legislative Committee for 2017. In an effort to engage a broader, more diverse audience, the San Antonio Chamber is broadcasting each of the City Council Candidate Forums using Facebook Live. It is important to note that the Chamber of Commerce does not endorse candidates. Rather, the purpose of these forums is to inform the community about the mayoral and city council candidates, their positions on the issues that are important to our membership relating to economic growth. The Chamber has over 2,100 area business members throughout the region. This membership employs half a million people throughout our San Antonio region. We are the seventh-largest city in the country, and our mission as a chamber is to propel business success by engaging the membership, by engaging city leadership and policymakers to address the issues that are of most importance to us. The business community here understands that working together with political leadership, we can strive as a community to be the city that we envision for tomorrow. So, thank you all for being here and welcome again. Prior to entering the room, the two candidates drew lots to see who would go first with a two-minute opening statement. We start with you, Mr. Courage.
Well, thank you, and good morning. I appreciate everybody watching or listening in today. I'm John Courage. I've been a 40-year resident of San Antonio and over 20-year resident of District 9. I came to San Antonio when I joined the Air Force, and I've stayed here ever since. While in the service, I was military policeman. I wore a badge, I carried a gun, and I defended the community that I was responsible for. While I've lived in San Antonio, I've had many opportunities to serve the community in different ways, one of which was I was elected to the Alamo Community College District Board and served on that board with distinction, I believe. I was the head of the Finance Committee. I also was on the team that helped develop Palo Alto Community College, the first college on the south side of San Antonio. For the last 22 years, I've been a teacher, excuse me, the last 27 years, I've been a teacher, and I've been involved in the education of our young people in the city. But at the end of this current year, which is about a week and a half away, I'm retiring from teaching. And when I heard that our current city councilperson was not going to run for reelection, I kind of felt like while one door was closing on my career, another one was opening. Because for many years, I've always wanted to continue to serve the people in District 9, the citizens of San Antonio. And so, I hope to do that as your city councilman in District 9. Thank you.
Mr. Barros?
Well, thank you, and thanks for joining us and for inviting us to be part of this forum. I appreciate all the work the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce has done for years. I'm Marco Barros. I've lived in San Antonio for over 30 years, all those years in District 9. Both of my kiddos are now grown after college. My wife is a CPA. We're both very happy living in San Antonio. We made a choice, and San Antonio was our number-one choice when we decided to move from El Paso. I've been very engaged and advocate for the San Antonio Chamber for over 23 years. In fact, I've had the pleasure of serving as its board directors many years ago. I have to say thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for preparing a lot of the leadership and all the programs they have supported throughout the years. When I say engaged and involved in the Chamber of Commerce, I really mean involved with SA2DC and many other committee work and so on. And I admire folks that have gone through the board, folks like John Montfort, Charlie Amato, Brenda Johnson, our friend Marty Wender, René Flores, and Rod Weaver, and so many good examples of leadership. A lot of people in the community do not realize the amount of work that gets done at the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce, the influence they've had in creating jobs, in keeping USAA, in keeping better service with Southwest Airlines, in bringing Toyota, in expanding Brooks, and all the things that the Chamber has done for many, many years. So, I'm a very proud member for over 23 years of the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you both for your remarks. We will begin with the prepared questions that we have discussed. I want to start by pointing out that right after this election, the City Council will begin the budget prioritization process for the next fiscal year. What will each of you advocate for as a top priority or as your top priorities for the next year's budget? I'll start with you, Mr. Barros.
The budget process is very, very long and very complicated. My focus will be on basic services. I think we have a lot of experience in, I've worked on a lot of the city budget for the past 10 years. So, my focus will be a lot of public safety and transportation issues, things that really benefit the city of San Antonio and all the citizens in general. But when I say public safety, I want to be more specific about, I like to work with the where we selected Mayor of San Antonio and with the city manager also in really increasing the number of police officers and increasing the number of classes at the police academy. One thing that I've heard very loud and clear from the taxpayers in District 9 that we do have a lot of deficiencies in the police department in the sense that we are short about 235 police officers. So, I want to work with the members of the City Council in making sure that we can protect our taxpayers all over the city, especially in District 9.
Thank you, Mr. Barros. Mr. Courage?
Well, I would have to say that when I've talked to the people in our district, that is what they've pointed out as their major concern, public safety. And it is true that we are shorthanded in the police department. As a former police officer, I understand the importance of having a full-strength police department that's there to support the community. And that would, I think, be my number-one priority to ensure in a budget that we forecast enough money to expand the police force. And at the same time, we've got beyond three-year, I guess we haven't resolved the police and fire contracts, the police contract has been resolved. The fireman's contract has been lingering for over three years. And I think that that has to be resolved because both the fire and the police are part of our public safety. And so, I believe that that's something that we need to include in our upcoming budget so that we know that we can resolve the fire department's contract. And beyond that, I think that transportation is the next important issue. I think the city needs to take a greater role in supporting the multimodal aspects of transportation in our community, including drumming up more support for VIA and looking at other transportation needs. For example, synchronizing the streetlights in San Antonio or making sure when the city resurfaces a street that also SAWs and CPS and all of the other agencies that have to do with the city and working on our streets coordinates that effort. And that takes planning, and that takes financial responsibility.
Mr. Courage, continuing on that, we have, you know, as city council members, you have the responsibility and the opportunity to lead on citywide issues, but you are elected first and foremost to represent the interests of your district. So, in the case of District 9, what is a specific issue facing District 9 that you would want to address? I'll ask you first, Mr. Courage, and then Mr. Barros.
Sure. Well, again, you know, I have to say it is police protection and response times and things of that nature. And so, you can resolve a lot of the concerns in many parts of the city of San Antonio if we have a well-trained and full-strength police force. But beyond that, the second-most consideration for people in District 9 is transportation. And we've got major arteries that the people who live in District 9 use every day, 281, 1604, even to a great extent going back and forth to work, I-10 and 35. And the city simply must take a stronger lead in working on improving transportation through the MPO and the RMA. We need to take a stronger role on those committees because they have so much to do with planning for the streets and transportation in the city. And as I said before, it's critical that VIA grow and be expanded across the city. And that's the role, I think, of the City Council, to be supportive and to help the community understand and get behind having a better bus transportation system throughout San Antonio and particularly to help service the people who live in the north side in District 9.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barros. Facing District 9, what issue?
I mentioned public safety, the number of police officers. I also need to mention the need to really have better repair EMS on fire departments. They're lacking some equipment there. I visited the seven substations, the fire departments on District 9, and I know their challenges. But I want to focus a little bit more about transportation, traffic congestion not only in 281 and 1604, but we have a lot of areas in District 9 that we just better access, turning access lane to the right, better flow of traffic. And I'm talking about Stone Oak, the area of Stone Oak and 1604, Stone Oak and Hibner is a major problem, Blancon Bitters. And I can mention lots of examples of very specific intersections that we need to improve the traffic flow. That is something that we really need to focus and provide. Now, a lot of these other issues that we, I've heard from many of the homeowners about drainage and streets and all that, a lot of those things, there will be 16 projects on District 9 with the passing of this recent city bond program, 16 projects that will facilitate and improve District 9. Three of those drainage issues will facilitate and improve all the specific areas where some of the homes were flooded. So, I'm looking forward to working on those projects and making sure that the monies that were approved in the city bond are used specifically on projects on time delivery and under budget.
So, let's stay on the topic of transportation because I'm sure it's an issue of great importance to the residents of District 9. What does solving for our transportation challenges look like? Where does multimodal transportation fit in? And tell me your thoughts, Mr. Barros, on the role of high-speed or passenger rail as part of the solution.
Well, in talking to a lot of residents of District 9, I don't think that we are prepared for light rail right now. I think we're a little bit far away from that. But I would tell you, HOB lanes or better moving access on 1604 is something that we really need to look very closely. The good news in working with the Texas Department of Transportation, District Engineer Mario Horkey here in town, 281 and 1604 is all funded. But funding will play a major role, and that's what the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce can really help us with the help also with SAMCO and other organizations that bring the funding from state and federal level. So, I think we have a lot of other projects that we just have to look for the right funding to pay for those projects. We cannot expect the city to pay for all that because we're tied specifically with a very tight budget. So, I think we've got to look for other solutions. But I think HOB lanes on 1604 and expanding access from 35 all the way to UTSA, which can be a bottleneck, not only from 7:00 to 8:00 in the morning, but if you're driven on 1604 between 4:00 and 5:00 p.m., that's also another nightmare of traffic.
Mr. Courage? The role of multimodal transportation options and light rail or passenger rail in San Antonio?
Well, I think that we should be looking at rail. And I think that what we should be developing is something called a brain train, something that would run from the south part of San Antonio, where we now have Palo Alto College and Texas A&amp;M, that would run through downtown to catch students who are going to UTSA, that would go through Trinity, that would go by Incarnate Word, that would go all the way up through San Marcos, would catch the students of Texas State, would go all the way up to Austin and even up to Georgetown along all of those higher education facilities. I call it a brain train because so many students, so many people, travel between San Antonio and Austin for higher educational purposes. We know the trouble that we have traveling between San Antonio and Austin. And I think a rail dedicated toward moving people who are trying to improve their education, but also to move basic commuters between San Antonio, Austin, is critical for the growth and development of San Antonio. At the same time, I think enhancing the bus transportation is critical. We have very inadequate bus transportation across the north side of San Antonio, and that leads to people using their cars all the time. If we had better transportation through VIA, more routes running more often, more frequently, I think the people in San Antonio District 9 would choose to ride the bus instead of sitting in their car for an extra 20 or 30 minutes both ways every day waiting for traffic. So, I think that's critical area.
Thank you very much, Mr. Courage.
I'm funny if I could add something to that. In the area of transportation, one of the things that would really facilitate better access, VIA is right now building a park-and-ride location on 281 and 1604. I think that could be the real test of improving transportation from the north side to downtown, where a lot of the residents live in District 9 and 10 but work downtown. So, that new VIA park-and-ride location will, hopefully, will be a great success.
Thank you. So, an issue very closely related to mobility in our community, job growth, and the strategies that as a community, as a business community, and as governmental entities at the local level, as a city, we pursue in order to foster job growth. What do you see us doing, Mr. Barros, to support job growth in San Antonio?
Well, the number-one thing that I hear from a lot of the folks looking for jobs is technology jobs. So, we got to work with groups like TechBlock and all those groups I've created because of Rackspace. So, I think we really need to start paying attention to a lot of these technical careers in the medical center, all these jobs with technology and to attract more of the younger folks to stay here and come to San Antonio. I'm also very, very happy to hear that the north side independent school district has started a lot of technical careers in high school that will lead into other technical jobs, including they have a brand-new program that they're just starting in September to create a path to be a paramedic, EMS firefighter, or a police officer. So, there's some other jobs. You don't have to go through a four-year college program. There's a lot of technical careers that could really improve the city.
Thank you. Mr. Courage?
Would you repeat the question?
Right. So, what is the role that city government can play in fostering job growth in our community?
Well, I think the key is education. And I think you've heard it from business leaders around this community and all across the country. If you have a well-educated populace, businesses are going to want to come to your community, employ those people, pay them well. And San Antonio needs to do more. We need to step up to help public education in San Antonio provide the kind of educated workforce that businesses are looking for. And so, I propose that San Antonio establish a San Antonio-area education foundation to offer the support that a lot of the public schools need. We just heard that the state legislature turned down a billion-dollar improvement to public education in Texas. So, the federal government and the state government are not stepping up and doing their part. So, it's up to us in San Antonio to expand our efforts to support education if we want to attract good businesses. And it's all important for our young people. Now, I agree, technology is an important area, but there are many other areas that people can go into when they have a quality education. And I think San Antonio needs to step up as a community and offer that kind of support. We already provide support for people who are entering school through the pre-K for SA program, and I'm a strong supporter of that. And we have Cafe College, which is geared towards helping students who leave school, leave high school, and get into college. But we don't have anything in the middle for all of the other students. That's where I think a foundation, a public partnership between members of the Chamber of Commerce, the city, the community as a whole can provide opportunities for students to go and work in some of these businesses as interns, opportunities for more mentors to go into the schools and make sure our students are getting the assistance in reading and writing mathematics so that they'll be successful. And when they graduate, they'll be prepared to enter a job market and work for the companies that will be enticed to come here.
Thank you, Mr. Courage. So, we talk about mobility, we talk about economic growth and job growth. We're talking about attracting this next generation of workers that are highly coveted by the cities that are on the move as San Antonio is millennials, the millennial generation. Mr. Barros, what do we do as a city to keep and grow and foster an interest of the millennial generation to live and work in San Antonio?
Well, a good example of that is what's happening in Brooks and Pearl, two of the biggest centers that I think that we afford. We continue to build affordable apartments and housing for them. Pearl is just a good example of some where they can work and buy to work and live in the same community. So, I see a lot of potential in the younger generation to keep working in technology jobs. We got to continue to attract those jobs. And cybersecurity is very, very important, which the San Antonio Chamber has taken a very active role. But I think it's also bringing more jobs that they're interested in. Gina Socelo from EDF has continued to work very tirelessly on bringing new companies that really attract the younger generation, the 22- to 30-year-old. And it's just really having the right tools for them and the right things like developments, even on the south side, west side. And we need to continue to develop other areas of San Antonio.
Thank you very much. Mr. Courage, the millennials, how do we draw them and keep them in San Antonio?
Well, I think San Antonio is an attractive community for a lot of millennials. We know many of them are starting to move into downtown. We see the growth of apartments all along Broadway and other areas. And so, I think they're attracted to be here. The key is having the right kind of jobs for them. And yes, technology is an important area. I think biotechnology is also an important area. The medical center is an important area. So, we already have here the right tools. I think that it's just a matter of making sure we continue to support those tools, that those opportunities grow. San Antonio is a very attractive city for a lot of people, a lot of businesses. And I think that we've done a pretty good job of keeping those businesses here and supporting those businesses. And I think it's going to continue to grow a lot on its own. So, I think the millennials will keep coming. And I just think that the city needs to do a good job in supporting a lot of the industries that we have now that are attracting them.
Thank you very much. So, we have a question from one of our Facebook Live viewers, and the question has to do with annexation. I'll start with you, Mr. Barros. The question is, annexation has been a hot topic at the state Capitol. Do you support giving property owners the right to vote for or against municipal annexation?
Yes, I'm in full agreement that if you're going to annex an area or district or neighborhood, the voters and the taxpayers should have the right to vote and be participants in the process.
Mr. Courage, annexation?
Yes, I would agree. As a matter of fact, you've been asking him all the questions first, and all I can pretty much say is, well, I agree because he's taking all my answers. But I think that's true. You do need to give the people who are living in that community the opportunity to go ahead and make the decision on their own. Although the city needs to protect itself, we can't get locked in like many major cities are. As the city grows, we need to be able to also expand that city. But I think the expansion needs to be further on the south side, the east side, southeast, southwest. I think we need to have smart growth in the city, and we haven't had smart growth. We've had unbridled growth across the north side of San Antonio, and a lot of communities have been pulled in that aren't being serviced the way they need to be serviced. And so, I think the city needs to be careful, and we need to reprioritize where we're trying to grow and incentivize growth in other parts of the city that are pro, or other parts of the county and areas near the city that are more probably interested in becoming part of San Antonio.
Thank you very much. And I am attempting to balance the order in which I ask the questions. I'll start with you now, Mr. Courage, and ask you about affordable housing in San Antonio. The 2017 bond program that was just approved includes $20 million for an affordable housing pilot program. What other types of initiatives would you propose to help address the issue of affordable housing?
I think that was an excellent program, and I think that we need to go ahead and consider expanding that based on what we see resolves from those areas. I think we also need to take a look at the areas that have been selected. Even though money has been allocated for that project, I don't think those particular areas are locked in. So, we need to try and work to revitalize a lot of the inner parts of the community that have not been well-maintained, where people have moved out, where there are homes that are falling apart. And we need to recreate good, livable areas in those areas for the community. But the key is, most of those areas are what we would call lower-income neighborhoods. And my fear is that those areas may get developed to where they become unaffordable for the people who used to live in those areas. And so, we need to ensure that affordable housing is rebuilt into those areas that are going to be developed with city money. I know that the prospect is that at least 50% of those homes are to be recreated or the livable areas as affordable homes. But we've had other projects that have been so-called affordable home projects, housing projects, that really aren't very affordable to the people who live there. So, I would want to be sure that we create an area that the people who lived in there in the past would have an opportunity to come back and live there again in a nicer community.
Thank you.
City Council plays a major role in affordable housing and bringing more development to other areas. And I can point to you, look at the success of Brooks, all the new apartments being built around there. There's one success program on the east side right now called Sage. I've talked to Jackie about this. We got to use those excellent business ideas that are being used in other sectors, other areas of town. And the success to affordable housing is to really provide it in all the sections of San Antonio. So, there's a lot of opportunity on the east side, the south side, the west side that we need to bring the parties. So, when I say the parties, all the organizations. The mayor's office yesterday had an affordable housing forum at the convention center. All of those parties should be working together, the city, the county, and all those other organizations that are interested in helping families. So, that's my response to that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Courage? What steps would you take to ensure that Bear County avoids nonattainment designation in terms of its air quality?
Well, I think part of that is expanding the other opportunities for transportation. I think if we're expanding VIA, we have better bus transportation, more people will be riding on bus transportation, fewer cars on the road. Also, I think it's important to go ahead and put in HOB lanes in our main arteries so that we encourage more people riding together, and that'll help out. And I think that we just need to recognize that we can't continue with the unbridled growth that we've had in the city. We need to offer other opportunities for transportation. And I think to a certain extent, sometime, light rail is a good possibility. I think that it's been developed in other areas that are not much bigger or financially have more resources than we do. I think it's something that we've got to consider. Otherwise, everybody who owns a car is going to get penalized when we lose attainment and the federal government comes down and says we've got to do more in inspecting our cars and adjusting the price of gasoline and things of that nature. So, I think it's to our benefit to think of more expansive transportation options, not just building more roads for more cars.
Mr. Barros?
Air quality, a lot is being done already. And I would tell you, thanks to the leadership of ACOG, the Alamo Area Council Governments, they're doing a lot of work on this subject. So, it's just a matter of bringing all the parties together and sticking to the plan. They have a very, very good plan on where we need to be in the next five years and 10 years. So, I applaud the leadership of ACOG and all those folks and members of commerce working together. That's where the solution lies in the next 10 years, their plan.
Thank you very much. I want to thank you both for your very thoughtful and thorough responses to our questions. I think this forum was of great benefit to the viewers from District 9 and from throughout the city. So, we will now go to closing comments. And as we agreed to at the beginning of the session, Mr. Barros, you will go first to close, two minutes, please.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate all that San Antonio Chamber of Commerce has done for me for over 23 years, engaging in a lot of business opportunities, working with them. I would not be here without the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce. And when I say that, I really mean that because the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce was the founder of the Tourism Council in 1995, was also the founder of San Antonio Sports, also the founder of BioMed EDF. So, I'm the pro-business person. I understand the challenges. One of the things that I'm very, very impressed that almost 80% of the members of the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce are small-business operators. They live all over the city. I know many of them that live in District 9, and they have businesses all over the city. So, I'm looking forward to be the next council member. I've been very, very engaged with almost five of the chambers of commerce because that's how you learn. And I'm very grateful for the opportunities and all the friendships, business relations that I've formed with SA2DC and the leadership class that I met in 1995. So, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Mr. Courage? Thank you. Yes, Mr. Barros is the Chamber of Commerce candidate, but I'm the citizens of District 9 candidate. I've lived there and worked there and shared their experiences. I've watched the growth and the development. I've been part of the community. And what I've been doing is talking to people in the community about their concerns, and their concerns are public safety, and their concerns are traffic, and their concerns are knowing that the quality of life is going to be maintained or improved in District 9. And that's my goal. I simply want to be your neighbor on the city council. I don't go onto the city council with a particular agenda, with special interests or private interests behind me. I'm not the next city councilperson appointed by the one before that, and the one before that, and the one before that. I want to be your city councilperson appointed by you, the voters in District 9, in this election. And I look forward to serving everybody in the community, business community, and all of the regular citizens. Thank you.
Thank you again to both of you for taking the time to be here with us today. Thank you to our viewership. I hope that you enjoyed this forum and found it informative. And we ask that you stay tuned for our next session, which will be at?
11:15.
At 11:15, featuring city council district?
Eight.
Eight. Thank you all very much. Stay tuned.